Councilmember Von Rudenberg, Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Vataglia.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I am going to read a quick proclamation. It's actually National Poison Prevention Week, and it reads, "Whereas Congress designated the third week in March to be National Poison Prevention Week, NPPW, in 1961, to help raise awareness of the dangers of potentially poisonous medicines, household chemicals, and other substances; and whereas poison centers across the county will focus the public's attention on identifying poisonous hazards at home as well as learning ways to prevent poisoning emergencies; and whereas unintentional poisoning is the leading cause of unintended injury death in New Jersey, half of all reported poison exposures involve children five years old and younger; the majority of poisoning deaths occur in adults aged 20 to 59; and whereas the New Jersey Poison Information and Education System, NJPIE, is a division of the Department of Emergency Medicine of the New Jersey Medical School of Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey, provides free, expert medical advice, drug information, and position prevention education to New Jersey residents through the 800-222-1222 Poison Help Hotline; and whereas the use of NJPIE's services save residents both time and money, most cases are managed in the convenience of the caller's home, requiring no hospital visit, we encourage all residents to program the hotline into their phones because a rapid response can make a difference in preventing serious injuries and saving lives. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus, Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of March 18th through 24th as National Poison Prevention Week in the City of Hackensack. You know, being a safety officer at the hospital, what we have at the hospital is we have what's called an SDS hotline, it's on the internet, we use a lot of chemicals in the hospital, and everybody is aware of what we have in the hospitals, but it's very easy to go on the internet, what we call for the hospital, and every chemical is listed that's used there, and it tells you its hazard rating, and anything, how you would treat a spill, or if somebody ingested it, or got on your skin, whatever. That's also available for you, for all your home chemicals, you can go online and get the SDS sheet on it by just going into the internet, and put SDS for Drano, for instance, and that will come up and let you know exactly what the contents are, what's dangerous, and how to treat it, and that's important, because a lot of times people panic and they'll actually use the wrong method, you know, flush with water when it's not a good idea, or something like that. So poisons are, you know, we all have chemicals in our house, it's our job to keep them away from children, as you saw how many, you know, children under five are injured due to chemicals. So it's an important thing in our lives to keep poisons away, so I'm glad we, every year we pass that proclamation. And with that, we are approving no minutes tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to the city manager for the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and invited guests, this is the city manager's report for March 26, 2018. Hackensack will be hosting the shredding event Saturday, June 16, Sears Parking Lot. The Building Department, and this is a two-week consolidated report, has done, 52 inspections were made.
Come here, what day is the shredding?
I'm sorry, sir. Saturday, June 16, Sears Parking Lot. And I will tell you, I don't know if it's, oh, and it's from, we have a flyer, I'm sure it's on the website, if not, I'll make sure that it is, June 16, 2018, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., rain or shine, Sears Parking Lot. No problem, sir. The Building Department has a consolidated, two-week report, they performed 52 inspections, 87 notices were issued, one summons was written, five OPRA's, and 13 CCO's. You're going to start to see more reports requested from different departments, it's a good way to obviously have a control of the activities of these departments, and obviously to demonstrate the activities of departments in the back-and-forth exchange to make sure that we're making sure that these departments are meeting the expectations of the mayor and council and the public. Our Recreation Department is preparing to host our annual Easter egg hunt, which will be this Wednesday, March 28, Johnson Park Turf Field. Flyers with new details have been distributed and are available, and also placed on our city website. Potholes, pothole hotline, telephone number 201-646-5058. If you see a pothole that needs repair, please report it to us. The DPW is working hard to fill these potholes, we've also solicited at least three quotes for a commercial paver to come in to help us with some of the large section repairs that, you know, just putting some cold patch in there, you know, some of these, we've had a rough winter with the heat and cold, you know, we've had temperatures 80 degrees and then it's, you know, 12. So this heaving and throwing has really raised havoc with our streets, but we are responding to those.
Can you repeat that number again, 201?
The sanitation, strike that, the Water and Sewer Department is also reporting their activities now to the city manager directly, and areas of cleaning and jetting are areas of High Street, Clay, Stanley. No flooding or backups to report. So we're starting to find that, and I don't know if the record would show, but I'm sure I stated it on a previous meeting, that I'm not so sure if we don't have a flooding condition more we have an ability to, a drainage problem where these pipes were not maintained, or not maintained to the standard that we really needed it, and obviously we will always have flooding because of the location, the geographic location, in terms of how close we are to the Hackensack River, but I seem to get some positive response that our efforts are showing signs that we might be on the right track. And that would complete the city manager's report.
Thank you.
Give me that, that pothole hotline?
Yes, sir.
I got 201-646-8058.
No, I'm sorry, sir. 5058.
5058.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that, we need Resolution 118.
Is Jim going to present?
Oh, that's right, we got Jim's presentation, sorry.
Am I, well, I went first this time.
Yeah.
So we are also fortunate enough to have our CFO, Jim Mangan, here, who's going to do a quick review of the 2018 budget. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Ted. Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm going to be repeating myself from the earlier meeting, you know, for the benefit of those people that weren't here for the COW meeting, but I said earlier that normally, when we do the budget, we've done the PowerPoint presentation where we present budget in detail at the time of the introduction. We'll be introducing the budget tonight, it's on the agenda as Resolution Number 136-18, but we'll actually be doing the PowerPoint presentation on the budget at the April 10 meeting. The reason for that is that we've been working, in finance, we've been working on our bond sale, which is scheduled to happen on March 28, and normally, we wouldn't introduce the budget until the PowerPoint presentation was ready. It's important, because that's the way we have been working for the last five years, it's important to be consistent. The only problem is that the state mandated that they set a deadline for budget introductions, and if we don't introduce the budget according to the statutory deadline, it does count against us on our best practices checklist, and it does put our state aid in jeopardy. So the decision was made that we'll still introduce the budget tonight, because the budget is completed, but we'll do the presentation for the public at the April 10 meeting. And then the public hearing is still scheduled for the April 24 meeting, and at that time, you know, the members of the public can comment as much as they want or ask, including also when we do the presentation at the April 10 meeting. And following the public hearing, we can either amend the budget or adopt it. But to give you an overview of what the budget itself looks like, the total budget is 104 million, 875,000, oh, I'm sorry, wrong number, the total budget is 105 million, 65,733 dollars, and that's a reduction in total spending of 104,875 dollars. The main drivers on the increase, well, let me, let me say first, the increase to the tax levy this year is 1,685,253 dollars, which is a 1.9 percent increase in the levy over last year. For the average home in Hackensack that's assessed at a value of 245 dollars, the municipal tax bill will represent an increase of about 78 dollars and 14 cents, okay? Those homes that are higher than the average assessed value will see a larger tax bill, homes assessed that are lower than the average, you would see a lower tax bill. The main driver in this year's budget was an increase in health benefits. Our total insurance budget is up by one and a half million dollars, about an 8 percent increase, and our insurance budget is split into three components, our health benefits, workers' compensation, and general liability. Health benefits are what drove this year's increase, okay? Our total health benefits are up 1.7 million dollars, and it's important to understand that Hackensack is a, for employee health benefits, is a self-insured enterprise, okay? You know, what that means is that although we participate in the Blue Cross network, we don't subscribe to any Blue Cross plans, we don't pay premiums, what we do is we pay claims. The reason we use the Blue Cross network is because the providers in the network agree to charge us a lower price, and there are good years and there are bad years, and for us, 2017, in terms of health benefits, just happened to be a bad year. By way of comparison, 2016 for us was a very good year, in terms of health benefits. In the 2017 budget, we were able to reduce our health benefit budget by over a half a million dollars, it was about 533,000. Unfortunately, 2017 wasn't as good, and you'll see the increase in health benefits in the 2018 budget is 1.7 million. One of the largest increases that we saw was on our prescription claims. Prescription claims are up 25 percent, which is a total of, a total increase of 554,000 dollars. Now, we've taken a number of steps to try and rein that number in as much as we can, but prescription benefits for our employees are a contracted benefit, part of the labor contracts. So we've taken a number of steps throughout the year to control what we can within the collective bargaining agreements, and then we've been negotiating with our labor unions for higher co-pays. Higher co-pays will then also drive down those costs, okay? Besides the health benefits, we also saw a large increase in our employer pension liability of about 490,000, and the other big, big increase in the budget is we are increasing our reserve for tax appeals by a half a million dollars, okay? I've talked long and hard about tax appeals over the years, in 2014, 15, and 16, we financed our tax appeals, you know, to the tune of roughly, it was about roughly altogether, I think it was 31, 32 million dollars, not counting the number, the dollar amount of the tax appeals which were withdrawn, which was substantial. The total was somewhere in the area of, in excess of 40 million, okay? But we were able to negotiate a number of those down, and we financed about 30 million. Now, that doesn't mean that our tax bill problem is solved, it's far from it, but right now what we're doing is we're not financing tax appeals, we need to pay for our tax appeal refunds out of our budget. We started this last year, because last year we didn't finance tax appeals either, we put a reserve of, for tax appeals of a half a million dollars into the budget, which was good for 2017, and what we're doing is we're increasing that number up to a million dollars in the 2018 budget, okay? When it comes a time when tax appeals are no longer initial, we'll be able to start stepping that reserve down, okay? But it's important that we do have a reserve, because we need to have a mechanism to be able to pay tax appeal refunds, especially if we're not going to finance anymore, and we're not financing that program work, it was a three-year program, but we need to look forward to see what we're going to do in the future. As I said, the increase to the levy of 1.9 percent is below the 2 percent levy cap, and one of the things that, and I said this earlier, I'll be elaborating when I do the PowerPoint presentation at the next meeting. Good news for Hackensack is that our total assessments are up again for the fourth year in a row, okay? Our total assessments, or total property values, since 2014 are up by 514 million dollars, and what that does is, by increasing all of our ratables, you know, and remember, we talk a lot about redevelopment, but the redevelopment hasn't hit to the ratables yet, you know, that's the future, but for now, in the last, since 2014, total property values are up 514 million. Of that 514 million, it's important to understand that 487 million dollars of that are in commercial properties alone. So while total property values are up 514 million, residential property values, or residential assessments since 2014, are only up 8 million dollars, okay? So the residents are seeing much more stable tax increases than the commercial properties are, but the fact that total valuations are up a half a billion dollars since 2014 is very encouraging, and in fact, in just this last week, Hackensack received a credit rating increase from Standard and Poor in advance of the bond sale that we're holding on Wednesday, okay? S&amp;P gave us a credit rating of AA, which is one step below their AAA credit rating, which is the highest credit rating there is. What they noted in the credit report was that we have strong liquidity, which we talked about last year, our cash flow in Hackensack is very good, strong budget performance, which doesn't mean necessarily that you're not raising taxes or anything, but the budgets are accurate, and that's important, it's important for investors to know that we take serious what we're doing, and what we say we're doing is what we actually are doing, you know, we're walking the walk, not just talking the talk. So again, at the PowerPoint presentation at the April 10 meeting, I'm going to go into some detail as to what the increase in assessments means to homeowners here in Hackensack. What I want to do is I want to try and get into explaining a little bit more about how your tax bill comes about, okay? We have control over the tax levy, which is what the budget represents, okay, but that's only one part of your tax bill. The other part of tax bill is the, is the value that your property is assessed at, and that's how, what happens is the valuations determine the tax rate, the levy determines your tax bill, okay? And we'll get into that when we do the presentation at the April 10 meeting, okay? For now, though, you have the executive summary of the budget, and I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has for now, although just keep in mind that for the April 10 meeting, you know, we will have much more information available to the public on the budget, okay? It's a budget that the city manager and I worked very hard on, we're proud of, it still accomplishes all of our financial long-term goals without sacrificing any programs, no layoffs, okay? We've included money for those things that we've identified as priorities for the year, and I'll be getting into that in more detail also at the April 10 meeting. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Good, thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Ted.
Good job.
Especially like the AA rating. Moving on to business, Resolution 118-18.
This was the resolution for final adoption of ordinance 41-2017, the bond ordinance, amending bond ordinance number 13-2016, finally adopted by the city council of the City of Hackensack, in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, on April 4, 2016, to increase the appropriation therein for items or expenses listed in and permitted under NJSA 40A:2-20 by an amount equal to 500,000. This ordinance had been advertised pursuant to law, and the public hearing was held on December 18, 2017. We would need a motion to remove it from the table, or we're just going to leave it table?
Just going to leave it on the table.
Okay.
Thank you. Resolution 119-18.
This is the resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 7-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 112 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Noise, to adopt a noise control ordinance based upon the model ordinance prepared by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to the New Jersey Noise Control Act. We had tabled this at the last meeting.
Yeah, if you want, I can jump in here. So we discussed this at some length at the COW session, which is, one of the requirements of this ordinance was to submit it for approval by the DEP because of one provision that we changed in the model ordinance that dealt with construction work on Sundays. We sought in the ordinance to prohibit it altogether, the DEP, and there is a noise council that's established in the State of New Jersey, considered that, and they felt that that was not consistent with the themes of the noise ordinance, which was to, you know, balance out the ability to create noise with, you know, certain restrictions on the level of it. So they felt that if the council wished to prohibit construction and demolition work on Sundays altogether, it would best be done via some other ordinance such as our nuisance code. So in order to proceed forward with the noise ordinance, I have prepared and presented to the council a proposed amendment that would restore the language to the version that the DEP model ordinance recommends. If the council wishes, it can vote on that amendment tonight, the ordinance will be amended, we will then have to re-advertise it and put it up for final adoption at the next meeting, we cannot proceed to adopt tonight. So that's up to the council, if they wish to address the matter tonight, wish to leave it for another meeting, but if you wish to proceed, I would suggest removing it from the table, making a motion to adopt the amendment, and at that point, to direct the city clerk to re-advertise the amended ordinance for final adoption at the first meeting in April. That's a decision that's totally up to all of you.
Everybody fine with removing this from the table and amending it?
Yes.
Okay, you need to remove it from the table and then make a motion to amend.
Okay, so we need a motion to remove ordinance number 7-2018 from the table.
Need an offer?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Vataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, the amendment reads as follows. Amendment to City of Hackensack Ordinance Number 7-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 112 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Noise to adopt a noise control ordinance based upon the model ordinance prepared by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to the New Jersey Noise Control Act. Section 112-9, restricted uses and activities is hereby amended to replace subsection C as follows. The original text read, "All construction and demolition activity excluding emergency work shall not be performed between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. on weekdays, or between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. on Saturdays and federal holidays unless such activities can meet the limits set forth in Tables 1, 2, or 3. Excluding emergency work, operating or permitting the operation of any tools or equipment used in construction, drilling, earthmoving, excavation, and demolition work at any time on Sundays is prohibited. At all other times, the limits set forth in Tables 1, 2, or 3 do not apply. All motorized equipment in construction and demolition activities shall be operated with a muffler and/or sound reduction device." The amended text shall read, "All construction and demolition activity excluding emergency work shall not be performed between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. on weekdays, or between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. on Saturdays and federal holidays unless such activities can meet the limits set forth in Tables 1, 2, or 3. At all other times, the limits set forth in Tables 1, 2, or 3 do not apply. All motorized equipment used in construction and demolition activities shall be operated with a muffler and/or sound reduction device." The amended text shall read, "All construction and demolition activity excluding emergency work shall not be performed between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. on weekdays, or between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. on Saturdays and federal holidays unless such activities can meet the limits set forth in Tables 1, 2, or 3. At all other times, the limits set forth in Tables 1, 2, or 3 do not apply. All motorized equipment used in construction and demolition activities shall be operated with a muffler and/or sound reduction device."
Okay. Hold on one second, do you have a copy of that?
Do you want to?
Resolution, the amendment, do you have a copy of that?
I can give you the copy I just read.
Sir.
That's what I just read.
Sorry, there just needs to be a change, this should actually say not Saturdays, it should say weekends on C.
So instead of on Saturdays, it should say on weekends?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I caught that, so.
Could you just rewrite, reread that into the record as it should be?
Okay. The amended text should read, "All construction and demolition activity excluding emergency work shall not be performed between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. on weekdays, or between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. on weekends and federal holidays unless such activities can meet the limits set forth in Tables 1, 2, or 3. At all other times, the limits set forth in Tables 1, 2, or 3 do not apply. All motorized equipment used in construction and demolition activities shall be operated with a muffler and/or sound reduction device."
Thank you. Okay, Resolution 120-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 12-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 117 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, entitled Parks, to prohibit dogs except for guide dogs and service dogs as defined at NJSA 10:5-5 in Atlantic Street Park.
Hey, I need a motion to introduce and amend.
No, just introduce.
It's an ordinance to amend Chapter 117.
To amend, okay, I apologize, need a motion to amend.
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Vataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 12-2018 is introduced, does now pass on first reading, and said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on April 10, 2018, at 8 o'clock p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Resolution 121-18.
A resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 13-2018, an ordinance requiring the retrofitting of certain existing storm drain inlets within the City of Hackensack.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second?
Second.
Second, somebody?
Second.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 13-2018 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on April 10th, 2018 at 8:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 122-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 14-2018 for calendar year 2018, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank as per NJSA 40A:4-45.14.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 14-2018 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on April 10th, 2018 at 8:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 123-18.
A resolution authorizing an emergency temporary appropriation prior to the adoption of the budget for NJSA 40A:4, I'm sorry, 4-20.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 124-18.
This is a resolution authorizing your veterans tax exemption.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 125-18.
A resolution authorizing the settlement of litigation entitled Thomas J. Hart versus City of Hackensack Claim Petition 2016-17956 pending in the New Jersey Division of Workers' Compensation.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 126-18.
A resolution authorizing award of bid contract to Bills Landscaping and Design Inc. for lawn care treatment and fertilization.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia? Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 127-18.
Resolution authorizing award of contract for Boswell Engineering for the City of Hackensack, Johnson Park Pistol Range remediation not to exceed $23,400.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia? Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 128-18.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of one front loader garbage truck through the National Co-op in the amount of $279,271.20.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 129-18.
A resolution adopting City of Hackensack surplus policy for fiscal 2018.
Need a motion, please?
Paul Street.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 130-18.
A resolution authorizing award of contract to Boswell Engineering for engineering services for the combined sewer overflow separation Phase 2 project. Phase 2, is it Phase 2-A or just Phase? Phase 2-A project. I had it right on the resolution, but not on the...
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 131-18.
A resolution authorizing award of bid contract to Zaccaro Inc. for Main Street Streetscape North Phase 2 and 3 project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia? Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 130-2-18.
A resolution authorizing tax refunds for duplicate payments and overpayments.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 133-18.
A resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services, construction support services to Boswell Engineering for the M&amp;M Building Renovation Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia? Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 134-18.
A resolution authorizing Murphy Orlando LLC to represent the City of Hackensack in Power versus Park at AL, docket number B E R L 1713-18, and increasing the not to exceed amount for other ongoing litigation.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Epstein.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 135-18.
A resolution authorizing the CY 2018 budget to be read by title only.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Jim, do I need you to read the whole resolution for this? No, it's okay just to do that? Okay.
Resolution 136-18.
A resolution authorizing the introduction of the 2018 municipal budget.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 137-18, payment of bills.
A resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Before moving forward with the consent agenda, is there any conflicts of the three resolutions on it? By anybody appear? Seeing none, consent agenda is read, please?
Okay. The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. And any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolution 138-18 through 140-18. 138-18 is a resolution authorizing a person-to-person liquor license transfer of BSPJ LLC to Lita &amp; Sons LLC for the Point and Still Irish Pub and Restaurant. Resolution 139-18 is a resolution authorizing raffle license for Women's Rights Information Center. And Resolution 140-18 is a resolution authorizing the mayor and council to sign the certification of EEOC compliance.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
All right. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk, you will have three minutes.
Actually, I have the microphone.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, I do, I had to come to another meeting before. Okay, I'm a resident of Hackensack. My name is Rosalyn Altman, and I live at 150 Overlook Avenue in Hackensack. I won a first day, I attended the March for Our Lives Rally in Hackensack this Saturday, and was very impressed with our youth speaking against gun violence. They spoke with commitment and emotion about wanting to feel safe and secure in their, when they go to school. Mayor LaBrus and the council, I want to commend you for stating that you will take action by adding, I think you said retired police officers in each school to hopefully protect and stop any violent altercations. I did, I did see that on TV, and also I heard you say that in public. However, what I am proposing is also necessary for the protection of all people in our Hackensack community. Thank you. I'm here to ask the council to endorse the resolution opposing a congressional bill sent to the Senate on December 7, 7, 2017, named the Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act. I think I brought this up once time before. This will force every state to recognize the concealed carry standards from another state, even if those standards are less than our own. As a member of the Brady Campaign, the Bergen Chapter, I feel, and they feel it's important, for as many New Jersey towns and counties to go on record opposing this bill because it would undermine our own law, laws for concealed carry. For instance, in New Jersey, we require someone whose business involves them to transport large portions of cash to apply for a permit. And it also requires that they receive approval from their local chief of police and the New Jersey Superior Court before issuance of this permit. Think, think of it this way, the concealed carry reciprocity states with weakest standards would dictate the law of the land and pose a danger carrying concealed guns into our own state. It would even allow people from other states with no permit whatsoever to come into our states with guns, never having to pass any background check at all. No wonder there are law enforcement agencies overwhelmingly that oppose this legislation. It's been denounced by the paternal order of the police, the International Association of Police, the Police Foundation, and the Major Cities Chiefs Association, which includes the chiefs of police and sheriffs of the 66 largest law enforcement organizations in the country. How dangerous is this bill? It would overwhelmingly override our state laws that prohibit guns in bars and even daycare centers. Would even roll back the federal law that requires a concealed carry permit to carry in K through 12 schools. The bill would also override high-capacity handgun magazines and regulating carrying on public lands. Concealed carry reciprocity would be an extraordinary encroachment on states' rights. Why is this relevant to your work?
Mrs. Altman, you're past your three, so if you could just finish up, but I want to speak to your comments when you're done.
All right. Well, I'll just tell you that the resolution did pass in 14 other Bergen County towns. T-Nec, Tenafly, I won't go into it, but they did pass it, a lot of them, and it's approaching almost 20. So, I hope you will consider my statements, and if you have any questions, please ask me, I hope to answer them.
I have given, given your, I've given a copy of the resolution to our city attorney for him to guide us through all of this so we can move forward with possibly passing this, I want all the pros and cons, not just from him, but from our city manager as well. But this is our first step. It's in his hands for him, and he's already spoken to the fact that a lot of, a lot of towns have already passed it.
All right? All right, thank you.
We're moving forward.
Okay, we're moving forward, I hope so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Larry Eisen, 390 Maple Hill Drive. I would just like to congratulate our city manager and our chief financial officer for their hard work in creating a budget that stays under the cap. I think that's really a major achievement, to do that without cutting services. I would hope that the Board of Education can learn from your example and stay within the same caps, because they have traditionally exceeded any kind of reasonable increase for a number of years now, so maybe you could go over there and give them some advice. a number of years now, so maybe you could go over there and give them some advice.
Next, please.
Regina DePosco, Parker Avenue. Larry, unfortunately, the meetings are the same night, and this one got moved, they both got moved because of the fashion show tomorrow night, so, but if the meetings were a different night, we could do that. First of all, Mr. Kleiman, you were offended that I used the word Nazi. You waited for me after the meeting last month to tell me how offended you were. You might not like what I have to say, but I have the right to say it. And my dad fought the Nazis, from D-Day to Battle of the Bulge, for my right to say what I choose to say. And every time you try to take away some of our rights, like I can look at the camera, you have reduced our time to speak, you have given us less information, yeah, the mushroom, the mushrooms, every time you do, I will say something. And if you're offended, that's on you. My dad put his life on the line, saw horrific things, horrific things, from D-Day, landed at Utah Beach, okay, to Battle of the Bulge, which was one of the worst battles in World War II, okay? For that right, and he taught me that all my life. So, you being offended, that's on you. Mrs. Canestrino, I don't know, I'm, you asked at that same meeting, she, you don't know why we don't understand. Do you understand how condescending you sound when you say that? Do you understand that? And what we don't understand is why you do not hear us. You listen only to reply with the same scripted speech and telling us to go to the Board of Ed about our taxes. Well, there was an article that, in Hackensack, the school taxes are only 45% of our tax, which means the rest of it is municipal and county. So, usually, it's, that's, that's not how it usually is. Usually, the school is a larger percentage of our tax. But this is, I mean, if you're going to refute that, like, or not know where I got it from, that's fine. Lodi went down, Hasbrook Heights went down, Hackensack not. But you keep telling us to go to the Board of Ed, so they'll reduce the taxes. I would rather pay more to the schools than to have it wasted, in my opinion. Mr. Mangen, you said that the residential taxes are more stable than commercial since 2014? I, I'm, the assessments aren't, the assessments aren't, my house, just the house, it went from 2015, went up 13,000, this is a 100-year-old house with no improvements, okay? Went up, the assessment went up 13,000, over 13,000. Now it's gone up 1,000, 1,000. My land, since 2015, went down 18,000, went up 10,000, went up 2,500. This is, this is not stable, this is not stable.
I believe her time is up.
Everybody else got more time, but I, I won't, and there's not a crowd here.
Mrs. DePosco.
If I could just answer her questions that she directed towards me, I would appreciate it, thank you. Regina, I, I probably say I don't understand why you don't understand, because I'm repeating the same thing each time, and I've said it many, many, many times, when I explain, or tried to explain how the tax, how your taxes are comprised, how they are made up. Next meeting, next meeting, are we asked, in response to this, because I can see that you're not understanding what I'm saying, and it is, and I do feel bad that I'm trying to help you understand and you don't understand. So, Jim, our CFO, next time, is actually, for the public, excuse me Regina, I'm answering you, for the public is actually going to do a presentation explaining how your taxes are derived. So, hopefully, he will be more thorough and will take step by step through how this actually comes to be, how your tax dollars are actually formed, so, so that's, and I apologize if you feel I'm being condescending, I'm not.
You just were, again.
I'm, I'm frustrated because I am trying to help you understand.
Then say nothing.
And if that comes across as being, no, you asked your question, I'm going to, I'm going to answer you.
We're not going to have back and forth, please.
As far as the school percentages being 45%, if you look since 2014, the school percentages is, are creeping up. They were lower, they're, they're creeping up in, in this city, just, I'm just stating fact, as you like to state fact. What you have to consider, Bergen, in Bergen County, Hackensack is a little bit of an anomaly because we really are a city. So, when you're comparing us to other towns, you have to look at other towns where you have a paid fire department, where you're providing sanitation services. You, if you're going to compare city percentages, you have to look at the city services. This city provides all of those services, where there are many other towns that don't have a paid fire department, or don't provide sanitation. And that's where you see the differences in the school and the city percentages. But here, as a city, if you look at cities like Jersey City, Newark, Clifton, you look at those cities where you're providing similar services, you will see percentages that even tip more and lower for the schools than the city of Hackensack. Of course, I would never ask you to deny spending money on our, on our students, and I haven't seen their budget, so I'm optimistic that this year will also be a good year. Last year for them was not, and the numbers speak for themselves. So, if you came to complain last year about your taxes, Jim presented percentages, 74% of the tax increase last year came from the Board of Ed's budget. It's, it happened, I'm not faulting it, I'm just saying it's reality. So, you, you have to look at what it is that's comprising your taxes before you come up and accuse us of things that is not true. Thank you.
You're condescending, that's true.
Next, please.
Rich Servo, 46 Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack. You know, I always welcome the public, and I, and I feel, I feel confident in welcoming the public. Help us with our voice, because it is being censored.
Mr. Servo, please address the chair.
Okay.
Please. You can look at the camera all he wants, camera doesn't have to aim at him either. Please address the chair, thank you.
Okay, so, let's, let's use one of the founding fathers tonight, Thomas Jefferson said that, you know, the most difficult task of, of government is taxation, okay? And it, and it tends to have the citizens become refractory. So, we understand it, I hope you understand it, we're going to always argue about taxes, we need a tax revolt in this town, okay? Because you're, you're laying everything on homeowners, okay? And you, you're not strong enough as a leader to negotiate with a county, okay? The hospital, even the schools. What about the schools? Why can't the schools kick in and pay? And I'll go as far as, as, even as a churchgoer, I'll go as far as saying, why can't the churches contribute? Everything, no one's paying taxes except the homeowners, all right? Okay, all right, I'm sorry, this, of course, is commercial property too, but everything's being laid on, on the, on the backs of the homeowners, and I'm telling you, we, we are, we are fed up with it, and that's why the, the public needs to be involved, okay? And I, I encourage you to come here and complain about your taxes, okay? And again, let me, let me explain to the public that you have this frenzied redevelopment going on, and it's, oh, it's wonderful, John, we, we have so much going on, all right? The only thing is, is I don't know if the public understands that, that those projects are paying nothing through that pilot program, and when the buildings are completed, that's when the clock will start on those pilot programs. That's correct.
But you are incorrect, they do pay land taxes.
Okay, so that means everybody in this room, and even some of the, some of the younger people walking around outside, will be gone, they'll be dead when full taxes are paid by those programs, and the public needs to know that, okay? Because if your taxes are going to keep going up on your home, and these guys are getting away with, with murder, come on, John, come on, you've got to have a better program. I mean, who the heck wouldn't build a building in town with the, with the giveaways you're giving? I'm, I'm thinking of, of maybe building a building in town if I could get what you're giving away, it's like a, it's like a, it's like a happy birthday if you're a developer, but no one else gets to.
Sorry, Rich, your time is up.
Yeah, okay, again, we can't, there's 20 more things to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Servo, your time is up.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, but I will speak to, it's not true that they do not pay any taxes, they do pay land tax.
Yeah, they pay land tax, that's it.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm explaining to you, and I also disagree wholeheartedly that everybody will be dead before they see the benefit.
Yeah, before they pay their full taxes.
Before they pay full taxes. Let me ask you, I'm not going to even ask you a question, because I don't want to go back and forth, but it's a, it's a common question that's asked, what would a, let's take, I'm going to use the same one I always use, Ortony Field Club paying $56,000 a year for a building, all right, old decrepit building? Nobody, but nobody is ever going to build there. They're not going to build there, unless what? Unless they get a pilot, all right? Because the pilot guarantees the developer a certainty of financing, whoever the length of the pilot, whatever is it, from 15 to 30 years, they're guaranteed that, just bear with me, so bear with me. So, the question's always asked, well, what would it pay if it paid normal taxation? You know what the answer is? $56,000. And you know why? Because nobody's ever going to build there without a pilot. That's just the way it is. No one's done it in 30 years? What makes you think, all of a sudden, people are going to flock to Hackensack and build these beautiful buildings that they're building without some assistance from the state? A state-run program, by the way, which encourages cities exactly like Hackensack to redevelop their downtowns, all right?
Okay, so the, so the developers are reaping all the benefits.
Rich, we're not going to go back and forth. No, the developers are not reaping all the benefits, because again...
What about, what about homeowners in town?
Okay, Rich, what's better, $56,000 for 30 more years, or $56,000 stopping, in the first year, 730,000, increasing from that point forward over 30 years? You, you do the math and tell me I'm wrong, because I'm dying to hear that one.
But it's all you're concerned about, it's the only thing you're concerned about.
Come back, come back at 56,000 times 30 years, and tell me that's more than you're going to be getting, because you're not even, it's not even a smidgen, it's a fraction of what we'll be getting, so, yeah.
Richard, let me ask you something, what would be your solution to try to get more revenue?
No, it's just that, negotiate, negotiate with these developers.
We're not, we're not going to go back and forth, thanks, Rich. I explained myself, I explained why pilots work, I explained why they're going to work, and why the city, in a few years, will be realizing a lot of revenue through the pilot programs.
Okay, oh, look, these facts you're laying out there.
Rich, 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 your time is up.
With Mr. Mangen here, it's good to say that...
Rich, your time is up, Rich, please. Officer, could you please?
Facts don't lie, but people lie about facts, okay? It's a police state.
Next, please. It's not a police state, not even close. If it was a police state, that camera wouldn't be there. Anybody else in the public? Motion to close?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Sorry, go ahead.
Good evening. I just wanted to remind everybody about our stigma-free committee. I attended the meeting today, and whoever did not take the pledge, you can go to www.hackensack.org/stigma-free. We encourage all the residents to take the pledge. If any businesses, local businesses, are interested in participating, we have stickers that they could put on their windows or their doors to show their support as well, so if there's anyone interested in that, please let us know. In regards to stigma-free, the Friendship House actually helped print some of those stamps. We actually, myself and the mayor, actually visited the Friendship House there, opening of the media center, and it was a pretty cool experience to see everyone that works at the Friendship House and participates there in our city, and contributing to every, you know, everything going on, so it was a nice, it was a nice event. Thank you to the city manager and Mr. Mangen for all your hard work, it's much appreciated, I know you guys put a lot of work into the budget. The youth art exhibit happened on the 15th, it was a great turnout at the Hackpat, the kids were so excited to see their artwork at the nice gallery, the parents were excited, there were a lot of people there, it was a really great time. Just a reminder that the Easter egg hunt is this Wednesday, no parents are putting down the field at any point, they'll have the Easter bunny there for the younger kids, and then the older kids can go out and do their Easter egg hunt on their own. And lastly, just a reminder to parents at the school, if there's not a police officer present, when dropping off your children or picking them up, please still abide by the rules, don't let your kids run out in the middle of the road, or double park in the middle of the street. And that's it, have a good night.
Thank you, Steph. Yes, congratulations to Jim and to Ted, especially on the upgrade of our credit rating, I mean, I think that says a lot, you know, over the past number of years, our CFO and our city manager has continued to make positive change as far as the city's finance, and it's nice to see that recognition appreciated. Also, thanks to, to Jim and Ted and the rest of the budget committee, Leo, Councilman Pataglia, and myself both sit on that budget committee, and finance committee as well, and I'm very proud to, to see the budget that Jim presented here tonight, you know, to see an impact of the tax levy of only $1.6 million, when our health benefit alone increased by 1.5, and our pensions contribution, which is dictated by the state, increased by almost another $500,000. And, you know, I also want to give credit to our city employees that, for looking at alternatives for health benefits. I mean, everyone knows, private industry, public industry, you know, health benefits are, are just escalating at a rapid pace. And we continue to look at other options and explore, and I know going forward this year with contract negotiations, the city is looking to offer a variety of plans that will help not only our employees, because it will help with their contribution, but it will also help the city and still provide excellent health benefits, so, you know, we look forward to hearing more about that from both of you. Another interesting thing on the agenda tonight, not to overlook, is the new surplus policy. I think Jim talked about this maybe at the last Cal meeting, but I think this was something that was instrumental in us seeing our credit rating upgrade. When we came into office in 2014, the surplus was down to $1 million. And I mean, what's reasonable, we looked at other cities nearby, other towns nearby, I mean, that number should at least be 9 to 12% of the annual budget to help with cash flow and et cetera, for the city's finances. And I'm happy to say now, Jim, what is it, is it 10 million or close to?
10.3.
10.3 million. So, in the past four and a half years, we've been able to slowly build that up to where it should be. And what this policy tonight says is that our commitment is to maintain that between 9 and 12%, so we always have that to manage the city financially well. And should it go over 12%? You know, should we get to the point where we have additional monies? We will, we're committed to taking any of that additional money and put it towards using it for tax relief. So, I think it's a very well-written policy, Jim, and I, I know you put a lot of time into it, thank you for that. Also tonight is the purchase of one of our new garbage trucks, yes, we know we're buying two this year, so that's a step in the right direction. Also, the phase-two sewer separation. I know we've talked about, we've completed phase one, where we're taking the combined sewer and separating them in the areas that are close to the river, so originally, all that was done was Anderson Street to Camden, now we're doing from Camden to, I think it's Sussex or Bridge, the block after Atlantic. So, we're looking tonight to, to get that plan in place and to execute that as well, and again, in, in preparation for, of course, that we're having new folks coming into the city, but also to alleviate problems throughout the city. And we're, we're trying to track and keep records on, you know, the cleaning that we did at the sewers, Dave, remember, we went through that extensively? And Ted, I talked to Jackie, we haven't had as many complaints this year, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed that maybe that really did help us, and we have to continue to, you know, look at catch basing guards, ways to keep them clean, and, you know, and see if that really, really makes a big difference in some of our areas, so I'm happy to see that. There was a, a resolution tonight about funding for Streetscape, most of that money comes from, I think all of it is coming from grant money. I forgot to mention to the council, but we have some plans, and I think it's worthwhile before we execute them, for not only the council, but the public to see them, so I asked Fran, Ted, if the next Cal meeting, we could just have Fran come in and do a presentation, so he could show folks, you know, what we're looking at, you know, streetlights, benches, garbage containers, pavers, you know, what we are looking at before we make our decision, and get some positive feedback and some community involvement, so, so that would be great. The egg hunt stuff mentioned this Wednesday, I'm going to be there, I look forward to seeing folks and children and preparation for Easter, it's usually, hopefully, a nice day, and the weather cooperates. If it doesn't, I think the rain date is Thursday, Ted?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's the next day, hopefully, we get a good day on Wednesday. Have a great night, everyone, and safe, safe home. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
I want to talk about the Easter egg hunt one more time. It starts at 4:00 PM. The one-year-olds kindergarten, they'll have a meet and greet where they're handed Easter eggs, and they'll take a picture with the Easter bunny. At 5:00 PM, the first grade and the fourth grade will have our traditional Easter egg hunt, where they get to run on the field in Johnson Park, but this year, they'll have no assistance from their parents.
Amen.
I want to thank Fred, Joe, and the police department, and the rest of DPW for a great job with this snow cleanup. Kudos to you. The high school used the new cultural arts building this past weekend, they put on a Broadway play cabaret. It was sold out three out of the, three out of the four days. I want to congratulate Mr. Gaines, great job. Jim and Ted, the budget once again, the speeches on how you guys do it, but you make the numbers work, and on behalf of the citizens and the residents, we appreciate it. This past weekend, I went down to DC, and what an incredible weekend it was, from Friday afternoon collecting final commission slips, to students organizing t-shirts and posters for the March for Lives Rally in Washington DC. There are no adequate, adequate words to describe what being with all those young, smart, and diverse humans felt like on Saturday. The march was overwhelming success. I was only there to help chaperone, the students did all the rest. They provided us with opportunity to bear witness to the next generation of young leaders. Now is the time for all Americans who share these same views to not only support these brave young people, but to wholeheartedly join them in their quest to finally break the hole the gun lobby has on our nation. Stand up, America. Good night.
Thank you. Dave, Leo?
Well, the first thing that I want to say is, like, congratulations again to Ted, Jean, and the rest of the people that really contributed to time, to keep the taxes low and we don't increase the spending. And four out of the five people that are sitting here, except the lawyer, we own houses, and it's no question that nobody want to pay higher taxes. And when the people complain about the pilot programs, every day in the newspaper that you see towns like, even the Old Four League, that were one of the first cities that started with the high rises, now they got new high rises again, Jersey City, Emerson, Clifton, and everybody tried to build something, they have to try to increase their revenue, is the only way. If somebody has got a better idea, come and see me and explain to me how we can do better than what we are doing. We really spend a lot of hours to try to manage the city, and for some people to kind of say that, oh, we can do this, or we can do that, sitting at the table with me or anybody else, and explain one-on-one, what is the best idea that you have to try to do better than what we are doing. Okay? Thank you, good night.
Thank you. I'll start off with my kudos to Jim and Ted for the work on the budget, and I'm especially pleased with the AA rating and going in the right direction. The fact that a half million dollars in assessment increase, to me, is a good, a good sign of cities going in the right direction. Had a busy weekend, Saturday, we had a, Hackensack-sponsored, a rally right here in our own backyard at the county building. I would say there were anywheres from around 1,500 to 2,000 people at the rally, a lot of young people. It was a very exciting day, it, you know, being a, a child of the 60s, it took me right back to late 60s, early 70s, watching the same exact type of rally going on. And it was about kids really fighting for their lives, that's what they're talking about, these teenagers are scared to death. There was a great cross-section of the county represented, different teenagers from different high schools spoke, Hackensack was represented. high schools spoke, Hackensack was represented, our young lady did a wonderful job speaking on behalf of our school system. It was well-run, it was, there was no problems, and when everybody left, it was clean as a whistle. So I appreciate the way, to all the people that ran it, and to all the teens who made sure they did the right thing. Sunday, early morning, I had a, the honor of giving a proclamation to the Supreme Governor of the Moose Lodge of the United States, the Loyal Order of the Moose, which is a fraternal order, which gives quite a bit of money, gives over a hundred million dollars they've raised for charities, mostly for seniors and for children. They have over, over one million members in that organization. I was able to give a proclamation to the Supreme Governor, and of course, all the Lodi Moose officers were there, and there were other dignitaries there as well. From there, I left and went to TNEC, to Glen Point, to the American Muslim Union. They have a luncheon air every year where they honor, this year they honored three people, they honored our Attorney General, who lives here in Glen Rock, and was our, previously our prosecutor. They also honored our county executive, Jim Tedesco, and also honored Congressman Bill Presgrau from Passaic Valley. So it was a nice morning and afternoon. Potholes, the number, two oh one six four six five zero five eight. Do me a favor, call them in, because I'm seeing a lot of potholes out there, and I call in everyone I can see, but there's, there's a lot, so I need, I need your people to call in these, these potholes so we can help get them filled. I also ask them, I'm going to ask the city manager to tell our guys, somebody mentioned before, you know, we have guys driving around the city all day, they should be doing the same, they should be taking notes, hey, I saw one over here, guys, that's helping ourselves out on that. I totally agree, as the deputy mayor brought up, that I think some of the problems would, that we may have thought in the past was a sewer issue, was more of a maintenance issue on some issues, because we've been paying a lot of attention, cleaning them out, draining them out, we've taken a lot of stuff out of there, and it really has reduced the flooding problems in certain areas. So that was, that's important that we keep up that program, not just there but throughout the whole town. I was lucky enough to attend Friday night at our Hack Pack, the first high school play ever played in Hackensack, at the Hack Pack, and it was Cabaret. It was quite a show, they did a fantastic job. I enjoyed it tremendously. They put, Mr. Gaines did a good job, they put a little twist on it at the end, which kind of went along today with more to what's happening in today's society, and it was quite enjoyable, and the kids did a great job, and they all love using our theater. I spoke, gave a proclamation tonight for Poison Week, and I asked everybody to pay attention and make sure you keep dangerous chemicals away from our children, and anybody for that reason, for that matter. You saw a resolution tonight, or an introduction of an ordinance for Atlantic Street Park for dogs. It's unfortunate that we had to do this, but unfortunately, since that park's there, that park is used by a lot of our citizens, a lot of our citizens sit on the lawns for the shows there, and unfortunately, the residents in the area are using it for their dogs and not picking up after themselves, so therefore, we have no other choice but to not allow dogs in the park. It is unfortunate, had they picked up after their animals, we wouldn't be having this, this issue. We mentioned a new garbage truck, a new front loader, which is well-needed, the front loader we have is old, so that'd be getting ordered, that was a good thing. I'm speaking again in front of a group called NIOP, which is one of the largest real estate development companies in the, not companies, programs in the country. We're lucky enough to be honored by them in the past, and they've asked me to go talk about redeveloping the city. There's only two cities in the state of New Jersey that were asked to attend this, so I was honored to say yes to them, and that'll take place in April. Earlier, at the Cal, we talked about CBDG grants, federal governments trying to eliminate these grants. These grants are the way we pave our streets, they're matching funds, and it's very important that we keep them, and we will be passing a resolution to, to make sure that where our voice is heard along with all the other communities, that we should continue to get these grants. It was also mentioned by the deputy mayor about the streetscape on Main Street, which is mostly grant money, that's starting up. And the Main Street two-way conversion has started, I don't know if any of you have noticed it, but the, you're actually right now, you can't get to Hudson Street from Main Street, you have to actually get onto Main Street. That island will all be reconfigured as part of the new, new two-way conversion, it's a lot of work to do down that end. Sewer separation, that's also moving forward, which is a great thing. The Easter egg hunt, Mr. Sims brought up, it's for children only, and unfortunately, you know, it got a little out of hand last year with the parents picking up, you know, dozens of eggs and children going away crying, getting none, so we had to change that up a little bit, so we'll just be handing out eggs to the younger children, and the older children will be out on the field by themselves having fun. And with that, Sunday being Easter, I want to wish everybody a happy Easter. When is, when is Passover? It's pretty soon, right?
Passover is twenty eighth?
Friday, so I want to, yeah, we won't see anybody, I want to wish everybody a happy Passover, happy Easter, and we'll see you in April.
I just got one more thing to say.
Sure.
Next, next Wednesday, Monalve is having a rally. They're going, it's going to leave from the high school and go to Monalve Baptist Church. It's the anniversary of Martin Luther King getting assassinated fifty years ago.
April fourth.
So April fourth, Wednesday, starting at five o'clock, we're going to have a rally, I'm going to lead the march from the high school to Monalve. They're going to have mighty refreshments at the church. Please join us, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, motion, oh, we did close already. No, motion closed, sorry.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Happy Easter, everybody, and happy Passover.